Great. We'll come to order. Welcome to the July 21st, 2020 Meeting of the Salem Planning Commission. And I believe Natasha, we have somebody to swear in the oath of office.
Yes. So Commissioner Augustine, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye and state your name.
Aye, Dan Augustine.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or confirm?
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution laws of the United States of America.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And the city charter and ordinances of the city of Salem.
And the city charter and ordinances of the city of Salem.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully and lawfully perform.
Faithfully and lawfully perform.
The duties of planning commissioner for Salem during my continuance therein.
The duties of planning commissioner for Salem during my continuance therein.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good to have you. And we'll get to know you better, especially when we get to meet in person.
Absolutely.
Before Shelby calls the roll, just as a reminder, as we go through tonight's meeting, to use the raise your hand feature. And if you're having difficulty finding that, just like say something and we'll help you get there. So Shelby, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Augustine.
Present.
Commissioner Briggs.
Here.
Commissioner Heller.
Present.
Commissioner Hopchow.
I'm here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Pollak.
Here.
Commissioner Schweikart.
Here.
And Commissioner Slater.
Here.
We have four.
Thank you, Shelby. We don't have public comments. Consent calendar, item 4.1, Commissioner Schweikart, do you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from our July 7th meeting.
Second. Who was the second?
Me.
It was me. Thank you. It's hard to get everybody on one screen. Discussion on the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye and we need a roll call for that. Shelby, please.
You're muted, Shelby.
Hi. Commissioner Augustine.
Aye.
Commissioner Briggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopchow.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pollak.
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikert.
Aye.
And Commissioner Slater.
Aye.
And just for the record, I did send Commissioner Augustine the minutes from the last meeting. For that vote, so.
Thank you. Great. So we'll move on. There are no resolutions. Move on to item 4.3. Julie, do you want to talk to us about the letter you've sent to us?
Sure. So I'm Julie Warnock. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager in the Public Works Department. And we are preparing to submit an application to the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Department of Transportation through their Transportation and Growth Management Program. And so I was coming to you as a planning commissioner to ask if you would be willing to prepare a letter of support for the application. The, what we are proposing to submit is to undertake an urban trails implementation plan. The transportation system plan and the comprehensive park system master plan, which are both part of the Salem area comprehensive plan, contain both policies as well as a lot of mapped planned trails. And we have come to realize, or it's become more apparent recently, that we maybe, we need to add a little bit more definition to our trails. Because not every trail is going to serve the same function. Some are really primary thoroughfare trails. Sort of akin to highway system where you have, you know, your routes that go long distances and then you have your feeder system. And that really will influence how they are developed and constructed in terms of the design, the width, things like that. And so we are preparing to submit an application. We are going to council this coming Monday for approval to apply. And one of the things that the funding agency looks for when they evaluate applications is community support. And so for that reason, I've been going out to different stakeholder groups to ask if they'd be willing to sign a letter of support. And then if we receive the funding, the decision is supposed to be made sometime in September. Work would likely, if we're successful, work would likely start in early 2021 and conclude in 2022. This is the same funding source that was used to fund the consultant work on the State Street refinement plan that was done a couple of years ago, as well as the Winter and Maple Greenway Plan, among others, over the years. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. So using your raise the hand, anybody have a question for Julie? Give you guys a chance to weigh in. I'm not, okay, Commissioner Slater.
Hey Julie, I'm wondering if the planning committee and the public will have an opportunity to provide input on the master plan before it's finalized.
Yes, the planning process will include public engagement. We don't, we're not really, we're not starting from ground zero because we do have a network of planned trails. But we will be taking that out again to the public to affirm that that, those are the planned trails that we want. And to help in this classification or hierarchy scheme, as well as design features and priorities. So there will definitely be the opportunity for public engagement, possibly new trail locations might come out of that. You know, like I said, we have a very robust network of planned trails. We just need to get to the point where we can start having more of them actually be constructed or at least having space reserved for them as development occurs.
Thank you. May I ask a follow-up question?
You sure may.
What is the status of any possible trail that connects Deepwood to Riverfront Park and then onto Minto?
Um, Deepwood to Riverfront Park and onto Minto. So the, you know, there are a number of both existing and planned trails in that area. And I guess what I'm, you know, the biggest gap is the path, the planned connection from going under Commercial Street to Riverfront Park. And that is something that is in our plans. I would have to get back to you with the exact status on it. I know that we have obviously removed the concrete, whatever you call it, that was there, wall, foundation. And we have prepared a place for the path to go through, but we don't have funding at this point to construct it. And then the, you know, the sort of the biggest barrier right now is also the crossing underneath the railroad and getting approval. Is that what you're referring to? Or is there some other path that you're curious?
Yeah, yep, the one that runs basically from City Hall down Pringle Creek and on over towards Bush Pasture Park and Deepwood. But thank you, that was helpful.
You're welcome. Julie, I had a, just a comment on the letter. I didn't see a reference to the trails that we have connecting to Wallace Marine Park and to a different county. I just think that adding something about that would make it even a more robust, it would just prove how much we've got going already on that trail system.
Yes, we do have, obviously, the trails that go into Polk County and many more planned. And I would be perfectly happy for, if you guys want to amend that letter, you know, tweak it to, you know, add anything that you think would be really compelling, would be helpful.
Okay.
But, you know, we will also, of course, take input once we get going, you know, if we are successful.
Okay. If you feel confident that, with that, that draft, that's great. I don't want to hold up the process. Any other questions for Julie? Not, yes, Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, it works. Awesome. Thank you for, who was that? Slater, thank you for the directions. I always forget in Zoom where the feature is for raise your hand. So a question I have, in the memo, it notes that awards are usually in the $100,000 to $250,000 range. And that the city will have to spend about 12% of the total project cost, or at least 12% of what is awarded in grant funds. Maybe it's a two-part question. How far typically does a quarter million in funds get a trails project? And does the city need more than that to further this trails program?
So I guess I want to emphasize that this is a trails planning project that we are applying for. You know, so we're not going to be, I mean, this is a planning program. It does not pay for construction of anything.
Okay.
And so if we were trying to construct a large network of trails, a quarter million dollars would not necessarily get us that far. But the whole purpose of this program is to fund plans that can then position a community to be in a better position to move forward with construction and acquisition and prioritizing and working with the community as to what is important. So the, the funds are typically used to support a consultant contract. And so in this case, we are proposing to, that the total project cost would be about $175,000. And we are asking the state for $154,000. And then the remaining $21,000, if I'm doing my math right, would be provided through in-kind staff participation in the project. So it would not actually add anything to our, you know, staffing costs. It's just both parks planners, as well as transportation planners, would be supporting this project through our staff time. Does that help?
Would you have a follow-up, Commissioner Levin, or did that answer your, I think that answered your question?
That does answer my question. I have some tingling in the back of my head of another question rattling around, but it's not quite formulated. So I think I'll just hold that till we see further plan. But generally, I think it is worth supporting.
Okay, Commissioner Pollak, I believe you got your hand raised.
I just wanted to make, I just wanted to understand. So Julie, you are going to add what, I think President Greg's made a very good point about making statements in there about Polk County and Marine, the Marine area of West Salem. So are you going to put that in there or not? Because I didn't hear, hear, because she said then later, well, if you're happy with the letter, but I think it should be in there. Are you going to put, change it?
The, I mean, the letter is your letter.
Yeah.
For supporting the grant application.
Right.
The grant, in the grant application itself, I will speak to the connections into West Salem and beyond. And one thing that I do want to, you know, clarify is that this, this is a planning grant. It's not going to get down to the details of designing each and every trail that's in our plan.
Right.
Because that would definitely take more than, you know, 175 or 250,000.
Yeah.
It's looking at the overall network, but the trail that's planned along Marine Drive would definitely be one that's part of that network.
Right. I'm not asking to get on the network. I'm just saying, bringing more weight to our letter, it should include the Polk County and Marine Drive and all that. So President Griggs, were you going to recommend, like, on the second paragraph, the first, the first sentence, just put something there about it or?
Yeah, I'll send her some language.
Okay, thank you very much. That's, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Julie this point? So this is a, we need a motion, Commissioner Vice President McKinley, do you have a motion for us?
Sorry, am I on? I, yeah, okay, great, good, okay. What am I going to do? I'm going to approve it or are we going to?
You're authorizing me to like send that letter under my signature.
Madam President, I move that we authorize the letter to be sent out with your signature.
Supporting the grant.
Yeah, supporting the grant application. Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Commissioner Heller? Commissioner Heller's our second. Any discussion on that? Raising your hand and I'm seeing none. Shelby, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Augustine.
I received the, I didn't receive the letter, so I just, but I will, so I don't want to make a decision currently?
Yeah, so abstaining?
I'm abstaining, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Cool.
Commissioner Briggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopchow.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pollak.
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikert.
Aye.
And Commissioner Slater.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Shelby. We'll move on to the public hearing section. Are there any declarations that anybody wants to make? For example, Commissioner Augustine, I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to listen to the hearings, the public hearing, so that would be an example.
Yes, I did, I did an opportunity to listen to both hearings.
Okay.
And so I.
So you'll participate?
Yes.
To the deliberations?
Yes.
Great. So we'll move right into deliberations on 5.1. Commissioner McKinley, do you have a motion?
I do. Madam President, I move we adopt the report on item 5.1.
We have a second.
Hopchow, second.
Hopchow's our second, thank you. Discussion on the motion. Using your raise your hand lovely feature. I'm not seeing one, but I will give you guys a few more minutes. Shelby, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Augustine, oh, you, you watched the hearing, sorry, Commissioner Augustine.
Aye.
Commissioner Briggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopchow.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pollak.
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikert.
Aye.
And Commissioner Slater.
Aye.
Thank you. Pass unanimously. Moving on to deliberations on item 5.2. McKinley, Commissioner McKinley, do you have a motion? And then, let's do that first. Do you have a motion?
Sure, yes. Madam President, okay, yes. Madam President, I move that we adopt the report for item 5.2.
Do I have a second? And the second is?
Levin.
Levin, thank you. Okay. Does anybody feel like we need a staff summary on this? I know this was a complicated, more complicated case than the norm. Does anybody want to raise a hand if you want a summary? Otherwise, we'll go right into Commissioner Pollak.
No, no, no. This is.
Okay.
Deliberations.
For deliberations, okay.
A lower hand in.
Okay. Let's just go into deliberations, Commissioner Pollak.
Um, I actually don't support it as written. I don't think that condition regarding the street is warranted. I think we have a big issue of proportionality. And I think it'd be a little bit of, I think, an argument could be raised, it's an unconstitutional taking, because it doesn't really leave. Leave the. It really does, I think, leave one of the lots without, really, I think it damages it and it lessens the, the, the value to the point that it's not proportional with what we're asking. So that one, the, the one condition. I think it's, is it condition 10?
Condition 4.
Or 4, is it 4?
Yep. That's the one you're referencing, I believe.
Provide, no, no, 4 is the one minimum, oh wait, am I doing on the wrong thing? Oh, wait, yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, because I saved all the, all this stuff from all the different hearings, so.
Yeah. It's conditioned for that at the future development of parcels 1 and 2, the applicant shall either accommodate a street connection to the property of the north or provide evidence that the connection's not warranted. That was the revised condition 4.
Yeah, I don't, I actually don't support that. I just don't think we should have condition 4 at all.
Okay. And Commissioner Slater.
Yeah, I would suggest that we amend the resolution to eliminate condition 4 entirely. Is that possible? I don't know the procedural way to go about that.
Yeah. If the person who made the motion, which is that Commissioner McKinley, he's amenable to that, and it sounds like he, looks like he is.
Yeah.
So would you be okay with just deleting condition 4 out of the recommendation? Is that what you're suggesting, Commissioner Slater?
I am suggesting that.
So I guess I just want to clarify, Madam President, that you can also make a motion. So even though there's a motion on the floor, a second motion can be made. So Commissioner Slater, you can either ask the moving party if he will amend his motion, or you can move to amend the motion that's on the floor, to remove that condition.
I am happy to ask our Vice President to accept the suggestion.
Commissioner McKinley, we do a verbal on that.
Yes, I, I am good with the friendly amendment.
Thank you. Okay. So more discussion on the adjusted recommendation of eliminating condition 4. Any other comments?
I will make a comment on this. Am I, okay, I'm muted. The, I agree with my fellow commissioners on it. And as, and as far as my question to staff during the hearing a couple of weeks ago about the reasoning for this, and looking at it more over the last couple of weeks, what, and this is maybe for good of the order, or for clarification of why I'm choosing to support my commissioners in removing condition 4 after hearing what planning staff said, it would have, and I could have found justification if it was somehow proportional and, again, tied in with that eastern boundary of the property. It would have been a simple adjustment to the 600-foot requirement in the code, which is, I believe, something that staff can, can do. And if it was, you know, if they said you have to reserve 10 feet or 20 feet, and, and the other potentially 40 feet will be on the adjacent parcel that this would be the primary beneficiary of, then that I could have seen and justified more. The other part to this that I think a lot of us struggle with, and what Commissioner Pollak is referencing to as far as taking of land, is that condition 4 doesn't go further to actually state and clarify that if that roadway ever goes through, that that landowner will be compensated for turning that property over to the public. So those are the, the real holdups for me and why, and that's why I agree that we just need to flat out eliminate condition 4. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Schweikart.
Yeah, I would have to say that on that topic that Commissioner Levin just brought up, it would be helpful to clarify for both Lisa and Natasha, this is, I guess, geared towards you guys, to clarify how in a condition we could require a, a, a purchase by the, by the city. Because I guess that's, 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 you know, I get Commissioner Levin's point, and I guess where I'm coming from is thinking about the way that we've conditioned other applications and the role of, of the, the planning department and the planning commission to, to, you know, weigh in on conditions. I'm not sure I've ever seen something where we, we would condition, you know, a, a acquisition. And so I would be, I would be interested to hear about kind of how that, you know, for, I guess, maybe it's from a legal standpoint, how that would be, if that was an allowable thing, is to condition an acquisition by the city. I know that we do require the payment of, you know, development fees, permitting fees, you know, the, the, you know, the, 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 the cost of something is something that can be included in a condition of approval. It's just that an acquisition is not something I think I've seen before, an acquisition condition.
Lisa, did you want to address that, or do you want to just?
I was waiting, I was waiting for Natasha to unmute for.
No, I can't see her face.
I'm happy to, and I guess what I'd say is that you're in deliberations now. And if you want to raise questions that we address on a more theoretical issue in a later meeting, I'm happy to do that. But I don't necessarily think I want to do in deliberations, go into a reservation about that.
Yeah, that's, that's. Okay. Other discussion items on, has we had deliberations on this matter? Giving a little bit more time before. Shelby, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Augustine.
And this is in removing?
Condition 4, yeah, so.
Aye.
Commissioner Briggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopchow.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pollak.
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikert.
Aye.
And Commissioner Slater.
Aye.
Thank you, Shelby. We unanimous. Moving on through the agenda, planning administrators' reports. Please.
Sure. So first I wanted to introduce Zach. I introduced him to some of you at the beginning, but maybe he'll turn his camera on. I told him this was coming. This is Zachary. He's our other admin analyst in the department. He's new. He will be staffing Historic Landmarks Commission and Hearings Officer, but whenever Shelby's gone, he would be filling in. So I just, and he's here tonight to observe what Shelby's doing at the meeting. So just wanted to introduce him to everybody. So he shows up someday, you will know who he is.
Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, and I also wanted to give an update on the jury apartments on that tax increment financing district. If you remember that, at the North Campus, had come before the planning commission for all the land use and then for the creation of the, like, the, the urban renewal area district. So Monday night, council is going to have a report asking them to approve the final kind of agreement with the developer. And I know that the planning commission was concerned about number of units that would, that they would be providing affordable units in order to get that big tax break. And so what they've come up with is.
And so what they've come up with is thirty-six units would be affordable at sixty percent of the area median income, which was more than they had originally proposed. So apparently they got their construction bids and they were able to provide more affordable units. So I don't know if the council will agree to that. It's on their agenda, but it seems likely because it's more, more than they had before.
And Lisa, is it, what, do you know what percentage of the total? That is thirty-six?
I, I didn't look and I feel like there were like two hundred units or something when it came through. I can check and send you, send you guys an email so you know. And they're planning to begin construction in August and to be completed in August of twenty twenty-two. So, you know, hopefully, I know the, the council had the same concerns that you all did with the number of affordable units. So just thought you'd be interested in that. And if you want to watch Monday night, it's actually on the urban renewal agenda, not the city council agenda, which is right at the beginning. We do have an item for August fourth, the comp plan zone change, and I think Vice President McKinley is going to run the meeting that night. No Commissioner Griggs, right? I, I think there's
Vice President. No, I do, I need a Vice President.
You do need a Vice President.
You got a lot of people out there.
Who wants to be Vice President?
I see Commissioner Schreiber bringing your hand, yeah.
Schreiber, you're it.
Sold, sold. And we only have one hearing that night and we're still going to be doing the written comments. We are getting, I think closer to changing it so that we do public comment during the meeting. And the city manager wants us to do that, but we haven't quite got there staffing wise and technology wise for anything outside of city council, but I think that's coming for us. And I think before I announced that City Hall had opened, City Hall has now closed back down. We were open for two weeks and then a couple of employees tested positive during that time that were in the office. So we closed back down. So we are still, of course, helping everybody remotely. We're just as busy in planning, building safety everywhere and we're doing it by email, phone calls, you know, still doing inspections, all that kind of stuff. We're just not open in the public, so, to the public. So if you know anybody that is concerned about getting a development permit, we're still here, we're still working, we're just not in the office. That's all I have.
That's great. Any questions of Lisa? Commissioner Pollak?
Lisa, so this is a comprehensive, on August, on August, it's going to be a comprehensive plan change?
Yes.
Open house, right?
Yes, they did an open house.
So, and it's going to be in their staff report, right?
I'm going to tell Bryson, if it's not, he's getting fired. It's just Yeah, they, they did, they did an open house. They did a virtual open house. So they did it through the Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association met on Zoom. So we have been accepting that to, to fulfill the requirements.
Excellent, excellent.
You will be receiving testimony that that does not fulfill the requirements. There are some neighbors that are very unhappy that the entire application's not been put on hold until the pandemic's over. So you, we have been receiving a lot of testimony about that.
Commissioner Slater?
Hey Lisa, I'm just wondering if you can update us on the city website that displays the zoning applications and other development applications. Is that now live and complete?
It is live and complete, yeah. And it's called the Land Use Application Dashboard. I think I sent it to the commissioners, didn't I? Does that sound familiar? Yeah, okay, a few people nodded. So I, I'll say, I can send you out another link.
Thank you.
We have, we have a map online and you can see all the land use applications that are active. You can either just zoom in, you know, to an area or you can search by neighborhood association. You can search by type of application. So if you just want to look at like the land divisions or the design review cases or something like that, and it tells you all the active cases. And then in a different color, everything that has been decided in the last ninety days. So it's been approved or denied or whatever. After ninety days, they drop off the map. So we developed that for, mainly for neighborhood associations. We have a database where people could look up applications, but it's not user friendly. You know, a map is better, I think, for people. I think they like it a lot better. People can find it, has its own webpage, but it's also under each neighborhood association on our webpage. So if you're interested in your neighborhood association, you'll see a link to it from there as well to help you. And then we just launched another version of it for building permits. So building permits is also the same kind of map and the same kind of timeline. So you want to know if your neighbor got a building permit, you can go look on the map before you call and complain or inquire if they're doing work without permits. So I'll send out links to those. And we're planning to try to expand it to further types of permits now that we kind of have the base, the framework for the map. So Public Works permits and other things will hopefully be on there in the near future.
Yeah, great. Other questions of Lisa? Okay, moving on to comments for the good of the order. Any comments for the good of the order? And so Commissioner Augustine, that would be, you know, yeah, I mean, you really can talk about anything. Typically, if I'm going to be gone, had that not been announced a few minutes ago, I would make note that I'm not going to be there for the August fourth meeting. But, you know, pretty much wide open. And I'm seeing Commissioner Schreiber followed by Commissioner Pollak.
So I, taking a page out of Commissioner Kupcho's book of trying to get us all knowing what's going on in our community and surveys of, I took the survey for the, the Neighborhood Hub. So thank you for alerting me to the fact that that exists and I, and I'm glad that I did it. And along that same, the same lines, yesterday I received an email about the stormwater master plan update. And did everyone get that?
Yes.
Okay, great. I was just gonna, just gonna, you know, give everyone a heads up in case folks had missed it that you know, they're doing their, their open house virtually, but we had the pleasure of, of having Public Works come and give the presentation that they gave to us. What was it now? Five months, seven months, a hundred and fifty years ago and
Pre-COVID.
And, and, and so I mean, I guess that, it feels for me, I feel like, okay, I, I know, I know enough to be dangerous probably, but I know enough that I want to, you know, continue to learn more about what we're doing in, in the city around that, that, that topic. So I just want to make sure everyone realizes that they can participate in the virtual open house for the stormwater master plan update.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Other comments for the good of the order? Seeing none, I will, oh, Commissioner Pollak, just in the nick of time.
Yeah, this is more on a personal note. I just want to tell everybody that I received an eligibility letter for Medicare. Freaking out so, in, in, oh, immediately afterwards, I seem to be misplacing things. So I'm the butt of my husband's jokes all this week, but I'm eligible for Medicare, so. If I, if we were together, I'd make you guys some more brisket.
Yeah.
Or invite you because we're having a shrimp boil. But anyway, I want to just tell you guys that I miss being with all you guys. And hopefully we'll be together soon.
I hope so. Commissioner Schreiber?
Sorry, I, I forgot one thing that I was going to ask Lisa, which is that I had realized when, when Commissioner Pollak was thinking about when her term ended, that I should probably check since I have a partial term since I was filling, I was filling not a full term, but a partial term when I started. And I realized that my partial term ends in December. And so I was wondering if there is a, a process that the, that the planning staff initiates with the commissioners about renewal, or if that's something that I need to initiate.
Yeah, I think actually normally the city manager's office, the mayor's office would reach out to you, Linda Rose, and ask if you want to be considered for reappointment. But she usually does that like October, I think, if that sounds familiar to the other commissioners. But if you want to now, you could just send me an email now. I hope you want to be reappointed and then I could forward it on and then they will put that in their records and, and consider that, so.
Of course she does.
It's auto, it's auto renewing subscription, so. Happen whether you want it or not.
My, my nineteen ninety-nine last year to get, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments for the good of the order? We are adjourned. Have a great night.
Great.
Bye, everybody.
And welcome.